Uh, we're gonna go to town in Kyoto, agenda, regular meetings, six P M., places, Kyoto City Hall. Call to order, call roll.
Johnson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Call. McCormick?
Yes.
Starsman.
Number three, please, legends.
But legends to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic which is stand one nation under one liberty and justice.
Number four, discuss the vote to approve all minutes for June two thousand twenty-three.
I vote to attend or discuss them. Right to approve.
I second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number five, discuss the vote to approve all June twenty-three bills for general funds.
I vote to discuss and vote on.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number six, discuss the vote to approve all June twenty-three bills for street now and I make a motion to attend.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number seven, discuss the vote to approve all June twenty-three bills for fire department.
I make motion to approve.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Number seven, pipe Maxwell would like to address the council, she's not here, so if she shows up before we get done with this and that, then we'll let her talk.
Okay.
Uh, number nine, discuss the vote to accept Jeff Starman's resignation. I make a motion to accept it.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number ten, discuss the vote to remove Jeff Starman from mayor position. I make a motion to remove him as mayor position.
I s- I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number eleven, discuss the vote for a new mayor.
I make motion to be over a new mayor.
I second it.
I don't know, you you have to nominate somebody to vote.
Yeah, well, I I'm gonna say the things that Greg already files higher than he 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 takes the position for competition. I'll second it.
I'll end that. Okay.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
So you're the mayor pretty?
I'm mayor. You wanna take over this? You wanna take over reading it? Number twelve, discuss the vote accept Tammy Goss resignation.
I make motion to be accepted.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes. Number thirteen, discuss the vote to get a new auditor up to five thousand dollars annual and to assign a council member to interview and accept. Um, I talked to Joy about that. She said as long as it says up to five thousand, we won't have to take without bids and to accept it. One council member wouldn't be able to accept it if they can interview him and tell you that you can accept it, that's it.
Recommend somebody, you can appoint somebody to, yeah, do that definitely. They can recommend somebody and you can agree or not.
So, I mean, it, I mean, as far as I care, you know, all of us, if one of us is around, you know, they can call him.
Yeah.
Call either one of us to come up there and interview him. So, I mean, we don't have to actually appoint one of us, so just just if any of us is free and available to come up talk to him.
Okay, so you're you're voting, you're you're making a motion to allow any one of you to, any of you auditors that are available.
Yeah, I second it. Yep.
Who first did?
I did.
Jerry Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes. Uh, number fourteen, discuss the vote to put up a sign at each end of town for Enos Seemore.
Seymour, I didn't have to spell that.
Seymour.
But it's here, he knows all about that sign.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Enos was a very good athlete here years ago when he was in high school. He went on through college and was a baseball coach at Bay Cone University. Then he went to OU and he coached twenty-one years at OU. He is from Red Hill, Oklahoma.
Yeah.
And I was want to put a sign up at each end of town by the girl softball sign, two foot by four foot, red with white letters. Uh, saying home of former OU baseball coach, Enos Seymour.
Be better if you put.
I talked to Shane Rummond and he had no problem with it. Do what, Red?
Wouldn't it be better if you put our school of colors up there?
Um, somebody said something to me here a while back about it, you know, before we put it down here, and I don't see no problem with it. I mean, at all.
I think it would be an honor to the town and him both.
I mean, it'd be just like putting up the sign over there at Gans', you know, home of or Justin, whatever his name is, and over poem, that guy over there. I mean, it'd be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Enos is, he's ninety-two year old now.
So, I mean.
He's.
So he went to school here?
He went and graduated high school here.
You bring him down to your second bud and have a picture taken with him?
Uh.
We get that sign up, we're gonna get him down here and have a picture taken with him.
If he can make it back, I don't know whether, he's got cancer in his nose now and he battling that, so I don't.
Good idea, right?
I don't, I don't know, right? Maybe, maybe he'll make it back to old time today, you know, he used to come every year.
Yeah.
And so, so y'all have no problem with it?
No, we're already, we're already got it.
I'll talk to Shane and see what Shane says about me putting it out there by the girls.
Oh, who's paying for it? Who's paying for the sign?
Two foot by four foot.
Who's paying for it? Do you want the city to pay for that?
Oh, there probably gonna be about eight or nine of them.
Okay, then would, they just need clarification.
Yeah, there'll probably be eight or nine of them.
Oh, no, no problem.
Yeah, it was close to city, yeah.
No, I was gonna say, oh, I need to donate, that sounds interesting, I'd like to learn more.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Okay, number fifteen, vote to tear down the house at five oh three Grand. We discussed that here a while back, but we didn't put it on there to take a vote to tear it down.
Is that the one I need the contract on?
Yes, that's the one I need the contract on.
Just making sure it's the same, yeah.
Yeah. All we gotta do is.
Lawrence versus ousted beside the dollar store?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, is it the other house?
I just made sure it wasn't like a kind of a day.
Yeah.
There's just something hanging there on a wire that might need to get removed.
It's just, it it looked like a stick or something.
That's the big limb, is it from the root or from the ground up on like that? I don't know if that's a catch or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might need to kind of take off if nothing else.
Yeah, exactly.
What are you gonna do with all the rock?
Uh, the county bond, the county, uh, Clark and him done said that once we start to get them tore down, that they would assist us in getting them cleaned up.
Are you gonna burn the rest of it? Clean the brush up?
Mm-hmm.
Good idea.
Yeah, 'cause we cleaned it brush up one time and it's all grow back up and then Tammy them said we couldn't be back on nobody's private property, so we just stopped.
Yeah.
So.
We're we're gonna clean it up and he he takes over from there, clearly.
Yeah. Yeah, he done, he done paid us for it and everything to do it, so we're gonna get it cleaned up for him and he's gonna have the money guys to start cleaning it up.
He.
When would this, when would this be done? When is the projected by?
It's just as soon as we can take it.
This next week kind of thing?
Yeah.
Just as soon as it gets dry, while we get in there and get it.
Right, well, yeah, that's right, I got you.
Yeah.
I vote to tear it down first.
As soon as we get a chance to get in there.
You second it?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number sixteen, discuss the vote to purchase lawnmower blades for the lawnmower. Um, he went up there the other day and bought some. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, yeah, he went up there and bought some, some for it because he had, the blades was not cutting and they wasn't that much and I went ahead and told him to go get them.
And who's he?
But now, now you approved the amount.
Okay.
And who's he?
Well, there wasn't no amount to it.
And we're not sharpening them?
Yeah, he left them up there to be sharpened.
And he is?
So that way.
Who's he?
Uh, Rubin.
I just, on record.
No, he left the blades up there to be sharpened, so that way when these here gets dull, only they'll just take it back up there and get them changed back over and leave them up there to be sharpened again. But no, he already went and bought blades for it.
Those must have had to be built with them.
I don't know.
What were the cost for the blades?
They was only like fifty something dollars. I mean, they wasn't that much.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I vote to purchase the blades.
Approved.
Approved, okay.
Yes. Approved.
They already bought them anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless he was thinking about purchasing more. I don't know.
But is that something we need to address about in this one apartment, we don't find something?
No, he he talked to me about it.
Oh, did he?
Yes.
And y'all each have, I think, a certain amount to prove, but then you usually come back and say we've done this and you kind of approve it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, this is another.
How'd you pay for them the other day?
Huh?
How'd you, how'd you pay for them the other?
They supposed to be sending us a bill.
There's a, there's a charge account there.
We got a charge account too, uh, uh.
Um.
Pace?
No.
Mike Falls, is it Mike Falls?
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, you went to Mike Falls.
Yep.
Okay, all right, Ray, motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You second? Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes. Number seventeen, discuss the vote to purchase street sign in the amount of about four hundred and sixty bucks. What's the street sign for?
Uh, like, uh, but we was talking about like the the street signs for the the names of the roads and stuff, some of them's faded.
Oh, some of them's faded and some of them gone, I think.
Some of them faded, some of them's it's gone.
They're gone.
Or they.
Oh, missing signs.
Some of you can't read, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that, this here is the one that we need to replace, the the one that we can't read or bend or stuff.
Some down in this side.
Yes.
Very good idea.
You another firework?
I vote to, to purchase them.
I just went on a call the other day and I could not figure out where I was going, because there wasn't no street sign on some of the roads.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Number eighteen, discuss the vote to remove stop sign at Second and Stockton and Franklin, Eighth and Keys and Eighth and Burton and use where needed.
We've got four-way stops there, uh, one block from the highway. Uh, we didn't understand why we had four, four-way stop. We figured we could remove two of them, leave a one-way stop and use them where needed instead of spending more money to purchase more signs.
No, I mean, I can understand the one down here by the school.
By the pit lot field. That one was to be discussed.
Yeah, that one down there, that that needed to be, but the other ones is, is, well, I never understood that either.
Yeah. Okay.
Down there by.
Down there by the playground, one block under the side of the playground. And then the, the other one up on the street.
I think, I think it's staying in names. Did it, did it, just last year, the year before maybe?
I think the one on the by the park might be necessary if it becomes where that curb gets to be used more often, where people would stop.
Year before. Yeah.
But the one on the other side, I don't, where Stockton, I don't think, yeah, yeah, I don't think that one's necessary so much.
Yeah, over there by the house, yeah.
We need to be leaning sign down there by the porch right there.
Yeah, we got speed signs all over there.
But it's kind of close to where the kids would come in and out on that side, where the other side you really won't have much.
But I mean, even, even, even stopping that stop sign, a little teenager's gonna take him, unless to take off, they're gonna fore it and they're gonna come through there anyway and then.
Here's my opinion, I mean, other than the stop sign, I think we should have a speed breaker down there, a speed bump to the stop sign.
That might be a better idea, I like that.
That's what I've been talking about too for a long time, but I was just only one person.
A speed bump right there, uh, whichever way you're going to.
Well, one probably eat on either side of it.
Yeah. Slow them down either way.
I mean, that, that's my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I like to think the car could be very busy sometimes, you know, and.
Ah. I agree with it, I mean, we ought to just take, remove them and move them where we need them.
I second it.
Johnson?
Guys, I'm not really trying to be in a rush, but I gotta be in a, on city night, so.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Nineteen, discuss the vote to purchase police body cameras.
Okay, now, uh, to, we brought up, all we need is the clips, not the body cameras.
Okay, just clips.
Just the clips.
Yeah, they, they basically look like this right here.
Did you check on that, Kevin?
Did you check on the price on them?
I had not, but I will. Uh, they look like this, but they're two-sided. We just have one side right now. That's like then and there and locks and then this. The other side goes inside your pocket and is magnet.
Only, okay.
Yeah, yeah, magnetizes to take them.
Yeah, yeah, and then I'm gonna need tapes of both ends and some power to pull the parts, so even if you're chasing somebody, it just will not fall out of your pocket.
Um. So we just need the clips, so the body cameras.
Yeah, we just need the, we've got, we've got what, three body cameras?
We got three body cameras and we only have, well, we found this one in his car, I'm using it until we can get another clip.
One clip. And I've got one myself, but we need.
So what do we need? One clip, two clips?
One, one, two clip, I mean.
Two, two, yeah, it's two brackets. Okay, so we need to. I looked on watch guard, the city, and they said if I could find price for the brackets, and I didn't give me no quote or nothing, I guess I'll have to call or something or. Okay, um, this something that we can wait on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, I can, shall we handle prices?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll just wait on that there.
Table it.
Yeah, we'll table that, till we get prices.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll get the price on it.
And it won't be the body cameras, it'll be the clips, yeah, just the brackets.
Clips, I'll give it to her, like, she'll, she'll.
Yeah. Okay. Number twenty, old business. Uh, uh, number twenty-one, new business on the, on the floor, vice mayor for re-vote.
New, new business?
Yeah.
On Tenth Street, six oh one East Main, it's a security light. I take it for granted if it wasn't a PSO. The old Doc Carson place, trees have grown up, even when it's lit, it doesn't do any good. Trees need to be cut down thoroughly, illuminate the street.
Is that the one up on the corner?
Yes. It's back from highway now.
It's light up by the road?
It's right there by the road.
Yeah, that's gonna be PSOs. We need to get all of them to address that.
Yeah.
Up there just past Charlie's house.
Or the one on the highway?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's not on the highway, it's on Tenth Street.
No, it's off the road a little bit, it's off.
It's on Tenth Street.
It's on Tenth Street down there.
But it, it's continuously burning and there's nobody living there, so it's gotta be a PSO.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's PSOs, we'll get, get somebody, get all the minutes, get that addressed.
It shouldn't be continuously burning, you know, with the street light.
Well, it comes on at nighttime, it's, it's a security light, like, that most part of the house.
Well, don't, don't, I said it continuously burned.
I said something a little about this, some of it continuously burning, I say, and it ain't costing them down anymore.
Well, I know what I mean, I know.
It's, you think they want us, yeah.
But you can take more days.
How can we do that on the, well, I expect that on the next agenda, won't we, for the?
Can you do it for new business?
No, for the.
I think you could, um, for voting on stuff, you can vote on the next one if you want, or you can do it now. I mean, it was on there, the resignation and doing new officers, so.
Yeah.
Um, and at some point, but on the next one, you do need to.
Just.
Appoint new people.
Yeah, just go ahead and just, just put it on there anyway. Just, just add it to the next agenda anyway.
The vote, vote to appoint new council members, uh, you can vote for vice if you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all got that PSO guy number here.
Or.
Yeah.
And he can, he'll put a L E D, he's.
Yeah.
He was wo- working with our other mayor, but he.
Yeah.
They didn't get along, jumped on him or whatever, but he'll put it on, he'll put out a new L E D, 'cause he called me, 'cause we got some out down here.
Uh, I want to, uh, on new business, I want to give up vice mayor and re-vote it. Uh, I want to nominate Ray for vice mayor.
I'll second it.
Could you say that?
I did.
Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes. But, yeah, get off PSO, I don't see what I can do there. Alright, number twenty.
Oh, I was gonna say, I have one more thing real quick, it is dealing with the trees and stuff. Um, I don't know who's responsible for cutting the trees down, that's on the front of the school park. Uh, the one that's going ten miles an hour, I can't think of the name, Knight, is that one? Um, they're hanging down where when you go under, my, that my S U V is, it's almost touching the top of my car. So I'm wondering, is that the school or is that us? That needs to kind of cut it back a little bit.
Where's it at?
Uh, in front of the Volka Park, uh, the school, the.
Down by the dollars down by my house.
Yes, yes, yes.
Down by the curb?
Yes, well, right in front of the school, actually, right, yeah. It's pretty low, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it is, it's pretty low.
There's some of them right down here that's hanging down too, at the post office and stuff.
Exactly, and I'm just looking, are we, was it, okay, I didn't know if it's us or the school.
They're rolling down. And it would be.
Yeah, lots of, lots of.
Yeah.
City property. And it really don't make it, you might have taken track of them.
Yeah.
It, it's about three or four feet off the road.
One drive, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna get close to that.
Take the back door down there and take change, I'll do it. Alright, number twenty-two, adjourned. Make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Hey, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, let's go straight to K P W A. Um, it is. I can't see that.
Talk back here.
It is six twenty-six. Uh, call roll, call, call to order, call roll.
Johnson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Call. McCormick?
Yes.
Starsman?
Number three, discuss the vote to approve all minutes for June twenty-three.
I make motion to approve.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Call. McCormick?
Yes. Number four, discuss the vote to approve all June twenty, twenty-three bills for water funds. I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Uh, number six, discuss the vote to accept Jeff Starman's resignation.
We forgot number five.
Oh, did I?
Sir.
I did do it, didn't I? Discuss. Number five, discuss the vote to approve all June twenty-three bills for sewer funds. I make a motion to attend.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number six, discuss the vote to accept Jeff Starman's resignation.
I make motion to accept it.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number seven, discuss the vote to remove Jeff Starman from mayor. We'll do the same thing we did on the first one. Everybody accept it, yeah. Um, number eight, discuss the vote for new mayor. We'll do the same on that and put everybody except Greg. Uh, number nine, discuss the vote to accept Tammy Goss resignation.
Make a motion to accept it.
I second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number ten, discuss the vote to, a new order up to five thousand dollars annual to assign a council member to interview and accept. We'll do it the same way we did on the council side. Number eleven, discuss the vote on what to do about the lagoons, lagoon. Uh. I mean, what you, I mean, what we do, just.
Those are things that, uh.
I need to be done?
D E Q.
Okay, this is the stuff that is.
That we're ruining out there and what to file.
Okay. Number one was how to measure discharge flow, discharge flow. Number two was what type of flow meter do we use? Number three was three-foot field board.
Three. Three board.
Three bill, three board. Number four was revised application signed by chief executive officer on, by the mayor, will be used.
What this consists of, you gonna have to explain why.
Ain't been no vote. Yeah.
There, okay, have to explain the D E Q?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there ain't been no vote, but.
And four is the three board. We just need somebody to haul some red clay and build them two corners up, we're, we're good.
So we need, we probably get county do that?
I asked him if I had any red clay and they said no.
Said no. So how much red clay were topping?
I'm looking at least six truckloads.
We need to get a bid on that?
Well.
Yeah, just, we get a bid on that one?
Well, you can probably get.
Bumper.
Yeah, bumpers got all types of red clay for, I mean, we'll just have to get it all to him and sign that, what it, what cost to get it.
Yeah, we'll have to get a bid on that, probably, uh, go over it on the next meeting.
Just, yeah, but that right there, the discharge, you'll just have to explain to them why there wasn't no discharge flow readings.
And.
And why. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, we're talking about discharge or kind of overflow of it or?
That's going to like.
Yeah. How much, how much discharge's going in there and everything, I can't, there ain't, there ain't been no readings on it.
Flow, flow.
Ain't been no break.
No. And Greg and me, Greg and I was up here whenever Doug was on the phone with her and she said that there has not been no.
Flowing.
Yeah.
And I, I have called Doug and said he had to help us out.
Yeah.
The flow meter's been broke for how long, did you expect?
Well, it was working when I left.
Yeah, I figured.
So we really don't know when it got broke or how long it's been broke, but, uh, we got readings on, uh, monthly paper that it needs to be on and.
Yeah.
Well, that's how it is, it's nothing like this, they were brought up and something broke. How, how, how did they go a year without somebody knowing?
Well, I mean, Doug just now found it.
Well, I mean, I want to make, not, not knowing what you did.
Not, not, no, what you're looking at and what you're, what you're looking at, what you're doing, not learning.
It's a lot of.
I mean, Doug just brought it to my kitchen to date.
We, we, uh, had to send Doug to, uh, Fort Smith with a sample and, uh, there's paperwork that's waiting to be filled out due tomorrow that needs that flow rating on it.
Yeah.
And we can't get the flow rating, so, to, uh, fill out the paperwork that's due tomorrow.
So we're gonna have to try to put it off until we can get the flow rating. Hopefully, hopefully they'll let us do it, so. Okay, uh.
I think they'd build that model.
So, we need to vote on that, what to do about the lagoon, so. I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Contact bumpers about the red clay, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss, get the price on it.
But, yeah, uh, how to do the flow rating, measurement discharge, I mean, we need to vote on that, you know, we need to get, get somebody to.
Yes. Well, now, we need, me and Doug has discussed it, uh, we, uh, we can probably fix the one that's broke, ain't that what? And, uh, you know, get it, get it to working for now until we get us a new one.
I did get ahold of Doug, Doug said he'd help me.
Yeah, so we, we can probably, uh, cut us a two by six and get it to working.
What do you think wrong with, uh?
The Austin program. They, they dropped the bean notch out of it, dropped the water level, which we've got to build that back up. I've got pictures of it.
Is this?
Yeah, this is what D E Q's.
Right, is this part of the purchase the medium or is this part of the lagoon?
No, this is part of the lagoon.
Part of.
Okay, I was just wondering if that was the next one.
And do by the two by six, we was talking about cutting the, there's a, actually a place you can measure manually, and that's what we was talking about, getting things for now to measure manually. Until we can get the flow meter fixed.
Doug has had him to come and program it before, and he thinks it costs us nothing.
But it's.
But it's, it's, it's an ongoing deal that he's having to have somebody come down and reprogram it and everything, and we're gonna have to do something.
The lagoon stays at that level, of course, it stays at that level.
So.
It's been a headache, sir.
So, I mean, and how we, how we supposed to vote on this? I would put vote on.
Vote.
I would just.
Vote on what needs to be done, vote on getting your desk.
I would say, yeah.
Because I'm never, I mean, well, that'd be on the, that'd be on the, uh.
Well, you see, you got to have a page in the.
It's gotta be done, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be done.
It's, it's done. I don't know, you don't have a page that.
It's not, um. It's not on any of this part of the agenda, maybe you need to put it on new business, and then vote on that, will we?
No, it, it, it's on the agenda, but it's just discussed to, uh, to, uh, uh.
Vote on it.
To vote on it, and this here is the.
Okay, I didn't think, okay, I was just thought, I was just thought, I didn't read them down, so, okay, okay.
Uh, are you sitting on some floor?
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna move on now, number twelve, number twelve, discuss the vote on purchase a new meter register. No way, this is different from, that's water, that's water, do I, no, I mean, how, how are we supposed to vote on this then?
You just got to vote to, that you can fix it.
Well, now, he is, he has talked to a gentleman today, uh, it don't cost you a free, but it ain't gonna, it ain't gonna be expensive.
I mean, I've never, I've never done anything.
It ain't gonna be, uh, I mean, probably next to free.
So we're gonna vote to have the meter fixed and, uh, get red clay to fix the lagoon?
The, the red clay will have to come on the next agenda due to probably the cost.
Okay.
The, uh, the meter fixed, he's gotta get it to reprogram, uh, he's talked to a guy today.
But that's still part of it, the part of it.
And the three foot board, I mean, that's, that's not very much, so, with the application signed, that, that automatically gonna be.
Yeah. Well, we. Yeah. We can get the board, we can do it by hand, the meter, if he can get it, I mean, it's probably not gonna be very high, don't know exactly how much, but probably next to nothing, if not nothing. Uh, so that's not gonna be an expensive cost. As far as the, uh, uh, the, the field board, what, I mean, I, is that the, the, where, that?
The V notch?
Yeah. That's for the dirt.
I'll just get a board.
Yeah, and we, that actually have to be on the next agenda, because, you know, uh, six loads of dirt, it's gonna be, that's gonna be, it's gonna run a little bit, so that has to be on the next agenda.
Okay.
I get that. So, if you're voting to, with, uh, what to do about the lagoon, so what you're gonna do, what you're voting to do is get red clay and fix the flow meter? That's what you're voting to do for?
Like I said, uh, this is the first time I've ever had to, had to do anything on the lagoon stuff, because I was never involved in it.
But if. But if the flow meter. If the flow meter is like a couple hundred dollars, you really don't need, like, the tie, like, the, you don't need to have a vote so much on that.
Right. Yeah, it's gonna be more than a couple hundred bucks for the flow meter.
Oh, you think so?
Well, that, we, all, all we need is to reprogram, we don't need to reprogram, we just need to reprogram.
Yeah.
Right, just reprogram and then get a whole meter later.
I mean, I, I vote to, we do what we.
What if you can't reprogram, or if you don't reprogram?
If it don't reprogram, I guess we'll get ahold of the engineer and try to get it in on the, on the grant, get on the grant that's going on.
Cause they're gonna have to have flow meter, the flow, the.
I have a flow.
Me and that should have to come out, yeah.
Well, they have what I'm saying, yeah, I know that, I understand that, but, but I just.
Okay.
I guess.
If it didn't.
Because I know each council member has so much they can use in an emergency situation, now this is considered an emergency situation.
We could laser off the.
And it's only, what is the amount, I think?
Well, it's two, it's two fifty, but maintenance, maintenance, you don't have to have one.
Okay.
Unless it's over, unless it's over.
Uh, unless, unless it's over the, over the amount. But, uh, this here be considered as maintenance unless it runs up too much money.
I can get it beat.
Yeah.
Uh.
Then you have to get it.
Yeah, then we gotta, but, like, the red clay, it will be over, so it'll have to be on the next meeting.
Yes. I get that, yeah.
Yes. The, the blow meter, we're thinking it won't be above that, and we'll get the board ready to do manual, just in case it is.
Hopefully, he'll do what he did last time, uh, not sorry, it's not.
Bumpers is real good hacking.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
When I was in the center, he'd bring us free loads, not charge none.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bumper just, real good.
Uh, well, I mean.
Yeah.
Yes.
I vote to do what we need to do at the lagoon.
I second it. If we're gonna have to fix it.
Yeah, it's gotta be fixed, I mean.
Gotta be fixed.
If not, D E Q's gonna get us.
Okay, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number twelve, discuss the vote to purchase new register, meter register.
Those water meters.
That's the top side of the water meters, we have got, we are out of them, we have got one down the road that is bad, uh, flowing, but not giving us the right reading.
Yeah.
We do need them, uh, we've got on here to, uh, purchase, uh, six of them, we're needing one right now, but we, you know, buy for back stock.
And so, how much are they for each meter?
It's not on here.
It's not on here, and how many?
He, he had.
It's right here.
Yeah, he had it right here.
It's right here, for each meter, the, for six meters, they're two hundred and thirty-seven eleven each. For six, that's fourteen, twenty-two, sixty-six, and, I mean, we got registers in here that don't have no tops at all.
Yeah.
So.
But as, as far as that go, we put the two hundred and thirty-seven eleven each, uh, uh, you know, we've got down there six of them, for, buy for stock. We can go with four, use one, have three in stock, we don't have to vote on the six.
Yeah.
I didn't know if this would be considered getting, uh, an estimate, if you wanted to go over the five hundred, where you have to get bids. And this.
Uh, this, this, this right here is through, you know, uh, what is this here company?
That's, that's all first we get.
There is.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's like some forty.
Morning, across the street, just crippled and lived.
Yeah.
And they say that's the five eights interchange registers with the six inch antennas.
That's for like our, like our house, if ours wish to go bad.
Yes.
Yes.
You come in there and figure it out.
I mean, like I said, like he said, we don't have to vote on the whole six, I mean, we can go with four, I mean, still have plenty right now, and.
But you definitely need to have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, just in case one goes bad at somebody's house.
Right.
Well, see, I vote to purchase, we need them, we, we need them.
Purchase how many?
Uh, oh, yeah, we need to amend that. Need to amend that.
It doesn't have an number on it.
I, I'd say down the port, in this, uh.
I mean, we need to amend it to how many we're on a register, uh.
Yeah.
Purchases.
How many did you say we had bad?
We've got one bad.
We've got one bad, we're gonna have three, three left.
Uh, right now, so they gotta give us three back here for stock. Which, I mean, uh, by my understanding, I guess they go bad more than I think, but, you know, I think three gives five, we might have to put it on two or three means down the road to get some more, but. At that time, you know, we'll, we'll.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna amend number twelve to, we're, uh, discussing purchase, purchase four. New meter registers.
I say it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Now, I want to make a motion to. Vote on it as amended.
I say it.
Hey, I did learn something from Doug.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. So what about that one?
Yes.
Number thirteen, discuss the vote to reduce water deposits to two hundred and a connecting fee of twenty dollars.
I vote to, uh, reduce it.
Yeah, cause the way it was before, there was no way nobody can afford to take them the way they had it, there was no way.
I'll second it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. Number fourteen, discuss the vote to purchase a weed eater, you got a price on them, or we don't need to purchase one now, do we, since you got that other one running? Oh, this.
No action.
No action on it. Doug found the other weed eater, he got it running, so. Uh, number fifteen, discuss the vote to send Doug Brand to get his sewer license.
I vote to send Doug to get his sewer license.
I'll say it.
Did we agree on that, that if it was part-time, it was okay?
Yes.
And is there some amendments to that, where, it's, not to say that you would leave Doug, but you get burdened, this where we pay for a license, and he decides to go somewhere else, and he's got this license.
We've been, we've been having them to sign a year contract with us.
There you go.
If, if we purchased their license, send them to school, we've been having them sign a year contract.
I don't see Doug going either way.
I don't either, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm the double factor, I always come up with.
But, uh, but like he said, since he's part-time, can we go ahead and do it?
Part-time.
Right now?
That's up to you guys, yes, legally you can.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the question, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, we're gonna have to have somebody with sewer anyways, cause we got one that don't wanna show up half time right now. Yeah. All right, say no names.
You all right? Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yeah. Uh, sixteen, discuss the vote to update, uh, national flood insurance program.
I vote to, uh, discuss the update.
It's just right here, ain't it?
So what is this about?
Hey, uh, it's the flood insurance, it's for Kyoto, ha, uh, for our town, if we don't pass it, nobody in town can get flood insurance, and if we have a disaster, a flood disaster, FEMA does not help. So we've got to, it's got to be passed, or we lose, nobody in town can get, ever get flood insurance, uh, unless we re, and, uh, if we have a flood disaster, FEMA does not come in with us.
And this.
I mean, it takes a lot of water to get up here to us right now, but, I mean, still, yeah, it could actually happen one day.
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
But what is the cost of that?
Yeah.
No, it's nothing.
Well, I, like, like, down here on these flood ditches and stuff like that, whenever they flood and gets up and.
We just have to update it.
Got.
Kind of threw a FEMA deal.
Yeah, it's just a little FEMA deal, and. Then if we don't pass it, the FEMA will not come in here and help us.
And we, we want the security of FEMA, just in case.
Yeah, because once, if we don't pass that right there, we have a tornado come through here for instance, and say, well, y'all don't have flood insurance, well, why should we even bother coming down here and helping with any of that?
Did you just say this, or did they send you a resolution, okay, great, I was wondering if I needed to do that or not, okay.
Yeah, but it's right here, you wanna look at it?
They know what to do.
Yeah, look at it real quick.
Did anybody second that?
Um, I heard, I think that's right.
I don't think nobody's showing up.
Who, who do we talk about this stuff on?
One of us.
You, you talk about delinquents too.
That's all business, we've discussed that. We, we had discussions about it, and, and. Oh, I know, but next again, I'll, I'll.
Okay, so they, this is an end, but they've emailed the ordinance that you guys need to.
Yeah, so here's all the FEMA stuff right there.
Well, I didn't, that wasn't important.
Well, I, I think it's all right.
So you're replacing. Just make sure, whenever y'all see it, I'll replace it, yep, the ordinance, we sat.
You can look over it, I'll.
No, I mean, I think you should do it.
She, she, she just told me this was all over, that was with this, right here on the FEMA stuff, so.
Yeah. Whenever y'all, we saw this news, this replaces your ordinance, so it's the. And I'm gonna probably.
I say it.
Actually, first.
I'll say it. Yeah, you can't say it twice.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson? McCormick?
Yes. Number seventeen, old business. Uh, that'll be on the town side.
Oh, it is, Laura, isn't it, you're right, you're right. That should have been on the last one, not this one, it's a media.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss, put that on the next, next agenda.
Yeah, absolutely, and get some names and stuff.
Yeah, we. I just need to get him to talk to me and see how they wanna do it too, because, uh, if they, if they just wanna, we need them to pick up a dog, they won't be able to get it and charge the person when they can pick it up, that's how they make their money, instead of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm good with that, I just need to figure out how we need to get it to approve the claim.
Okay.
And if we wanna approve, pick them up, got it, mine is.
Any, any old business? Uh, eighteen, new business. Nineteen, adjourned, I make a motion, adjourned.
I say it.
Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.